I'm going to move on to my COVID-19 update. In addition to the normal data and strategies I'll be sharing, I'm going to start with the video. It's one thing for me to be talking about the data, but it's something else entirely to hear from the frontline worker. So you're going to hear from one of our Kaiser ICU doctors. Go ahead and start the video.
Hello, my name is Laura Everhard. I'm an ICU doctor at Kaiser Centerfell, the chief of our critical care department, and I've been doing critical care in Marin County for over 20 years. And I have to say that having gone through 9/11 and the anthrax scares, and H1N1 power outages, hospitals evacuating to us, and wildfires in our nearby neighborhoods, with all of that, I've never seen anything quite like what we're confronting now. And as an ICU doctor, I'm not scared by much, but I find the prospect of having a hospital and an ICU overflowing and concerned about not being able to take good care of our residents of Marin, I find that scary. You know, we're really, we're not the first line, we are the last line. And we really are working so closely with that Department of Public Health, with Dr. Willis and Dr. Santora and our other hospitals in Marin, to do everything we can to support our community in staying safe. It really starts with our community. By the time people get to us, it's really late in the game. And only our community really can stop this epidemic. So we so appreciate that everything our Department of Public Health and all of our community members are doing for that.
Thank you. So I think that speaks for itself. I just want to thank the team at Kaiser and Marin Health, and Nevada Community Hospital, and Kenfield Rehabilitation Hospital, and all of our healthcare partners. One of the silver linings of this pandemic response has been the strengthened relationships across that network. And we could not be more fortunate as residents of this county to have the doctors and nurses and other healthcare providers that we have. They have been excellent partners all along the way. And we will have, we'll share, we solicit testimonials like that from other hospitals as well. We'll share these one to two-minute videos in future board presentations. And Alvaro, if I could have my slides now? I'll start with offering the data in terms of where we are with our numbers. And then I have important updates, both in terms of our current experience of the surge in Marin County, surges in cases, the stay-at-home order, and then the very good news around vaccines. Next, please. This represents the total number of cases we've had here in Marin since the beginning of the pandemic. Now, almost 6,300 cases, 209 hospitalizations, and 106 deaths. Next, please. And most of the data I'm going to share is available for any of the public on our website represented here. We've tested just over 222,000 people. Next, please. This is our epidemic curve and shows that we are really in very clearly what I think of as our second surge. There, some people are referring to this as the third surge because of that little blip at the beginning. But we're seeing rapid increases in cases weekly. And it looks like we are on target to eclipse that surge that we had seen in mid-July. Next, please. And stepping back, this is part of a statewide experience. In fact, cases in Marin County, despite the fact that we're seeing surges, still are among the lowest in the state. And really, much more dramatic rises across the state now with over 35,000 cases each day over the last couple of days across the state. Next, please. And then stepping back again, recognizing that this is part of a national experience of surges. And what's important about that is that historically, when there were surges in one area or another, we were able to mobilize resources and redistribute resources across the nation to meet the needs of those hard-hit areas. For example, Marin County providers were able to travel to New York City when they were having massive surges in cases there. That's no longer the case. Every jurisdiction is essentially on their own because they're all experiencing surges simultaneously. Next, please. This is our experience in Marin with regards to hospitalizations. We have 26, actually today it's 28 in the hospital, 11 in the ICU. This is the highest number of people we've had in an intensive care unit since that peak in July, where we also had, on a couple of days, also 11 patients in the ICU. Importantly, during that surge, many of our ICU patients, if you recall, were inmates at San Quentin State Prison. So this is the highest number of our non-San Quentin residents ever in ICU and the hospital. Next, please. Hospitalizations lag behind cases. Obviously, the first event that might lead someone to the hospital is the infection itself. Then they might get a test where we recognize them as a case. And then some fraction between 5 and 10% will require hospitalization. And then among those, about 1/3 require ICU. So we're able to predict, just by looking at case rates, what our hospital experience is. And that's one of the reasons I'm so concerned. Because as we see increasing case rates, now that our hospitalizations are reaching capacity, we can anticipate that a week from now, two weeks from now, unless that surge in cases decreases, the hospitals would be beyond capacity. And this graph just shows the total number of cases on the bars, and then the corresponding number of hospitalizations with the red line, and then the dotted line are the corresponding number of ICU admissions. And they obviously track. Next, please. This is the number of cases over time as it relates to the tiers. We had been talking just a month ago about trying to stay. We wanted to stay in the orange tier. We even had a slogan about trying to keep Marin County orange. We were doing well through the month of really late September and through October. We were able to maintain the policies that corresponded to the orange tier. And then that surge began, we were kind of later in that surge. It preceded Marin and most other areas. In fact, we had the lowest case rates in the state for a while. And we were one of the last counties to move into the purple tier. But now we are seeing similar surges in Marin, and we're well into the purple tier now. Next, please. And this is a map of just essentially the California blueprint. Those counties that remain in red and orange are rural counties with very small populations, and they have a different rubric that determines what their tier status is. So it's essentially a purple state right now. Next, please. So in response to this, the governor issued the stay-at-home order that now applies to the significant majority of the residents in the state of California are living under the stay-at-home order. Instead of looking at case rates and percent positivity to determine the tier status, it's now looking at ICU capacity to determine whether or not a given region as a whole needs to move into the stay-at-home order. Now, three regions across the state are under the stay-at-home order because ICU capacity at that region is less than 15%. And that's all of Southern California, Central Valley, and north of Sacramento. Only the Bay Area and Northern California, which is mainly the small rural counties in the north, are not in the stay-at-home order under the state. But our ICU capacity currently today is just above 15% as a region. Next, please. And this is the ICU capacity currently. So as a region where our use of capacity is 15.8%, again, if it drops beneath 15, the state will impose a stay-at-home order on us as a region. And then showing that San Joaquin Valley is 1.6% Southern California. And we're talking about all of Los Angeles, Orange County, San Diego. Only 1.7% ICU capacity available. So the state as a whole is 5.7%. Obviously, critical situation. Next, please. And this just shows the trend in ICU capacity over time. It shows that it's decreasing. These are yesterday's numbers for the Bay Area. We had 17.8% yesterday. Today, as I mentioned, it's 15.8%, so continues to decline. And we might imagine if that trend continues tomorrow, the next day, we would be placed in the stay-at-home order like those three other regions that are already in that status. Next, please. This is an important point for our community to understand. This is the relationship between Thanksgiving Day and surges in cases that followed. This is our daily case rate, represented by the number of cases as each bar. And you can see there, starting in early November, we started seeing progressive increases in cases overall. Thanksgiving Day is that shaded gray bar, 1126. And then four days later, we started seeing a statistically significant increase in our cases. And that has persisted. And if anyone was infected on Thanksgiving Day, we would expect any given exposure, it takes about three or four days to develop enough virus in their system to have a positive test. So anyone who was tested, who was infected on Thanksgiving Day and was tested four days later, we would expect to see the infection that resulted in. In fact, when we look on that four days after the 11:30, 12:01, 12:02, indeed see significant increases in cases that we might attribute to that particular gathering, which is obviously a real concern as we come into additional holiday gatherings that go along with the winter holidays. Next, please. So what is this? We are now reporting active cases. And I just want to review what this means because I think this is important for all of us. We have 586 active cases right now reported in Marin. And that's the number of new cases in the last two weeks. The CDC estimates that a diagnosed case is about six to 10 times lower than the number of actual people infected in the community in any given time. And that makes sense because not everyone has developed symptoms and not everyone may necessarily get tested during that period of infectivity. So if that's, applying those numbers to our known numbers of cases, we would estimate that right now about 4,000 individuals are currently infected across our county. But who are they? Where are they? We don't know, and that's the point. We don't know among those 4,000 or so we can expect to be infected right now and infectious to others. It's impossible to know who and where they are. They themselves may not even realize. So we have to assume anyone we come into contact with may be infected. Furthermore, we know that indoor gatherings are highest risk. And so for having gatherings together, you're really rolling the dice by having anyone else in your house because there's such a high proportion. As our case rates increase, the likelihood, the probability that someone that is coming in is infected grows. And that's growing exponentially. So that is the rationale behind the stay-at-home order, where the safest strategy for all of us is really to stay at home and limit our encounters with others outside of the household as much as possible as outlined in the order. Next, please. So we think of it as a circuit breaker. We know the community transmission is accelerating exponentially. Our hospital systems are at our full, near-full capacity. Case rates in Marin are four times higher than they were a month ago. Unfortunately, we know from a public health standpoint that the way to address that is through policies that limit mobility. It's the stay-at-home, it's the lockdown, whatever term may be used, shelter in place. Essentially, it's the global best practice for addressing surges when they're occurring. And that we know that earlier action shortens duration of surges and will lead to an earlier recovery. And that's why we're taking the action we're taking now. And again, activities should be limited only to essential functions. Next, please. So these are the elements of the regional stay-at-home order. All gatherings with members of other households are prohibited. Every individual should stay at home except as necessary for the operation, maintenance, or uses of critical infrastructure. That's the language of the order itself. Schools that had been reopened for in-person instruction can remain open. But schools that had not opened may not now newly open. Worship and political expression can occur outdoors only. Retail indoors is allowed at no more than 20% capacity and grocery at 35% capacity. Again, these are the state orders that we're applying here in Marin. Dining is takeout only. Personal services, including hair and nail salons, may not operate under the stay-at-home order. However, outdoor recreation facilities may continue to operate with limitations. Next, please. And this is where you may find more information about the stay-at-home order. COVID-19, California, their website is a good repository of a lot of the details in terms of the order. Our order essentially is the state's stay-at-home order. You can find a lot of information there and also at marinrecovers.com and the other sites here. Next, please. So now I'm going to move on to the good news, which is the first doses of the COVID-19 vaccine are arriving in Marin County tomorrow, December 16th. We have 1,950 doses of the Pfizer vaccine arriving. And then another 1,950 plus 3,000 Moderna doses arriving next week. Vaccinations are going to begin Thursday, December 17th, at Marin Health, Kaiser, and Novato Community Hospital for their staff. And also, we will begin vaccinating in our 13 skilled nursing facilities across the county through teams that have been mobilized. We'll hit two skilled nursing facilities on Thursday and then move through the weekend to complete all 13 by Monday. Next, please. So these are the three phases, just thinking, taking a broad view on how vaccine distribution is going to work. Timing is going to be based on supply. So the speed at which we move through these phases will be determined primarily by how much vaccine is available at what time. So I'm offering some broad brushstrokes in terms of the timing. This might be revised if we're able to get it more quickly. This would obviously be foreshortened. And if it takes longer, this would be a longer... But Phase 1 is beginning now, approximately through late January. And that's healthcare workers, first responders, long-term care facility residents. Phase 2, it will be likely late, somewhere in late January through February, which is non-healthcare workers in critical infrastructure and highest-risk community members based on either age or chronic conditions that would put them at higher risk for bad outcomes if they become infected. And then Phase 3, approximately March through June would be our general population. Next, please. So in Phase 1, this is where we are right now. And it's exciting that we're just starting right now in our Tier 1 of our Phase 1. And that's our acute care hospitals, as I mentioned, skilled nursing facilities, paramedics, EMTs, our first responders, and dialysis centers. And then we'll move on to Tier 2, probably next week, the following week, home healthcare, in-home supported services, community health workers, primary care clinics, and long-term care facility residents. Next, please. And then Tier 3 of our Phase 1 is specialty clinics, laboratory workers, dentists, oral health workers, and pharmacy staff who are working in those higher-tier settings. Next, please. And these are the numbers for our Phase 1 Tier 1. About 5,000 staff at the acute care hospitals, about 3,200 staff in our long-term care facilities. And that's both skilled nursing facilities and residential care facilities for the elderly. We have about 1,000 first responders in terms of our EMTs, paramedics, fire, and police, and then 50 in our dialysis settings. Next, please. So these are the two products. We've got the Pfizer and the Moderna. Both of them are mRNA vaccines. And I'm just going to offer a little summary of how they perform. The efficacy of both are essentially the same, 90, 95%. The trials, both very robust trials, phase-three clinical trials, 43,000 for the Pfizer vaccine, 30,000 for the Moderna vaccine, with corresponding, each had a good number of cases in the placebo group, which helps really strengthen the power of the study. And then only in a small number of cases in both studies who were actually vaccinated. And that's how you determine the effectiveness. Both of them have, well, the Pfizer vaccine has actually now gone through the scientific review where they were able to look behind the curtain and see beyond what the manufacturer had published. But actually, the data itself, every element of the data of the study, that scientific review committee has verified its safety and efficacy. And there are no significant safety concerns. Moderna products will be going through that exact same process this week. And we expect in very similar fashion to what happened with the Pfizer product. As soon as that is verified, we get the doses and we can hit the ground running. Number of planned doses is 50 million of the Pfizer vaccine and 20 million in the U.S. for the Moderna. Next, please. So they differ in little ways that we're taking into account in our operations. Pfizer is two doses are 21 days apart. And the Moderna is two doses about a month apart. You can't start with one, then go to the other. Once you start with one, you have to have the second dose for the other. They come in different minimum doses. The Pfizer product comes in pizza boxes that have 975 doses each. We're getting two of those tomorrow. Pfizer requires long-term storage. You may have heard the ultra-cold storage and some of the cold chain complexity of trying to manage the Pfizer product because it requires negative 73 Celsius. Fortunately, we have that technology here in Marin. Thank you to BioMarin for donating ultra-cold storage freezers, which we are using to store the vaccine that's coming tomorrow. Our hospitals also now have the ultra-cold storage. And they'll be distributed to the hospitals again tomorrow. The Moderna product is more conventional in terms of the infrastructure we use for that product. Next, please. This is an exciting sort of representation of how well these mRNA vaccines perform. This is the results of, this is just published in New England Journal of Medicine. We had a conference with Grand Rounds with all our healthcare providers on Friday. 300 healthcare providers joined the call when we went through the data so that all of our providers could feel secure in understanding this product and could actually translate and help their patients understand. And this is one of the key features. And basically, this graphic just shows how the vaccine performed relative to the people in the trials that had not received vaccines. The way the trials work is that you get 43,000 people, divide them in half, some get a placebo, some get the vaccine. Both the people who designed the study, the nurses, the doctors administering the vaccine, and the patients don't know whether they're getting the placebo or the product itself. And then you just follow them over time to see who gets infected and who doesn't. And that blue line shows that over that period of time, those that got the placebo became infected at normal community rates over time. So you can see more and more cases over time. Those that got the vaccine, that's that red line, basically stopped getting infected as much after about eight days after that second dose. So this was after the second dose. And really, what it shows is extreme efficacy. You see as those lines start to diverge between people who weren't getting the vaccine and those who were, that's how we measure the efficacy of the vaccine. And that's why we're competent. It's 90% or more based on this data. Next, please. So in summary, we are seeing surges in cases in Marin County, which are threatening the healthcare system. We know that COVID-19 can be prevented with the vaccine, and the vaccines are arriving this week. Unfortunately, it's going to be three months or more before the vaccine is widely available to the community as a whole. And fortunately, as Marin, we have demonstrated, we know how to contain spread. We have had some of the lowest case rates in the state. And that's thanks to all the work everyone in this community is doing to do in their own lives to prevent transmission. We need to continue to do those things now more than ever. And the simplest message is to stay at home except for those most essential functions. And when you're out, to cover your face, maintain physical distancing, and we'll get through this together. Next, please. And don't forget to get your flu shot. It's not too late, and they're still being offered. Next. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Willis, as always. Board members' questions? Supervisor Connolly?
Thank you, Dr. Willis. And before we head into questions, I want to thank you and our healthcare workers throughout Marin who are pulling double shifts and working tirelessly to save lives. So thank you very much. So I wanted to talk first and delve more into ICU capacity, which we know is a key metric. And recently, we received several emails regarding the issue of how ICU beds are counted. Specifically, the issue of that we, meaning public health, are counting ICU beds differently from how the state counts ICU beds. So if you could talk to that initially, and I have some follow-up.
Yes, the state has revised the way that they're looking at ICU beds. And in pre-COVID times, the way that the state just routinely measured ICU beds was by just the number of beds, the architecture, the physical number of beds in an intensive care unit was the denominator. What we've learned is that the functional limitations on ICU capacity is more frequently actually staffing rather than the number of beds. And so the state has revised that estimate to ask, how many beds could you actually staff? If there was a surge now, say 10 people rolled into the emergency department right now, how many could you get upstairs for critical care? And that's a smaller number than the number of beds. And so we have revised our estimate in Marin from 39 beds, which is the number of physical beds, to 29 staffable beds as our ICU capacity. We are working with the state to try and revise because that is a more intelligent and more functionally, just a feasible and practical way of looking at this. So we're hoping that the state will actually move to that method. Regardless, I think for Marin, I need and we all need to know, where are we in terms of actually our ability to manage patients in critical situations? So our hope is that the state method would catch up to the method we're using now. But right now, we have 29. So that estimate for Marin County is 29 staffable beds. And right now, we're close to that. The steps that people can take beyond, when we get to that 29 full, are things, as you mentioned, people are taking double shifts. There are mechanisms that allow us to move beyond that. Double shifts, canceling procedures, mobilizing staff from other parts of healthcare into the critical care setting, like if you're not doing electric procedures, knee replacements, hip replacements, which obviously are important for quality of life, that brings more staff in. But as soon as we start encroaching into those other elements, it immediately begins to affect the standard of care you can offer. Nursing staffing ratios, nurse-patient ratios. Normally, it's one-to-one for an ICU. You might move to one-to-two or one-to-three. So each of these steps we would take to increase our functional ICU capacity has an associated harm that we would need to take into account.
So in light of that, what can you tell us about the availability of ICU staffing resources currently? What can you share about efforts to hire or increase the number of available ICU staff? For example, understanding that you don't have direct authority over what hospitals do, but nevertheless are in the mix.
Well, I mean, the word unprecedented has been used unprecedented number of times. I mean, so this is unprecedented, right? So historical systems are not working right now because there's never been a level of constraint on the system as a whole. So historically, what you would do to increase ICU capacity would be to move people around. So if you're in a system like a Kaiser or a Sutter, you can shift staffing around to increase. Or you, they're hiring agencies. There's agencies where you can bring traveling nurses and doctors. Those are some of the steps you could take right now. Unfortunately, all those resources are tapped out. And so you're really more left with what you have available. So if you're stuck with your available staff currently on site, what you can do is make sure that you're up training. So there's short training, they're offering trainings for medical surgeons, nurse, to actually gain capacity to provide critical care through just-in-time trainings. You know, webinar trainings have been offered by the state for people to actually upstaffing for ICU capacity. Those are probably the most important measures that can be taken right now. And none of them are good. I mean, none of them feels safe. And that's why ultimately, the solution is to reduce the number of people rolling in with infections that require critical care.
Is there anything more that can be currently done? For example, to make the calls to traveling nurses? From what you can see, are we truly at capacity even with regard to those kind of resources at this time?
I mean, I think everyone is doing everything they can to try and get the resources we need. You know, there are... You know, there are other, Southern California, as bad as things are up here, Southern California is much worse off. There's 0% ICU capacity in the San Joaquin Valley right now as a region. And so we're, we're getting, I think yesterday, we had 40, you know, requests for 40 beds, you know, 40 individuals that they're trying to find room for, which we, we're not entertaining. We're not, we're not allowing patients from the, from outside to come into our ICUs right now because we're not able to accept them. So the, the traveling nurses and the traveling doctors are, you know, very, very limited resource. And we're not able to, right now, we're not able to successfully acquire them. I don't want to create a picture for our community that we are not able to manage patients who come in. There, that we are just at the beginning of that elastic point where we're starting to flex. The double shifts just starting. I don't know that any of our hospitals have actually needed to do any sort of ratio changes between nurses and patients.
Yeah, I was going to ask, what, what are current ratios right now?
They're, they're conventional rate, the conventional ratios. And it differs ICU versus medical surge. You know, each, the licensure indicates what the ratios are for different elements of hospital care. And they're, that's the, that's the levels that they're functioning at currently. But that would be one of the first things that would start to erode as we started to see more cases coming in.
So the Bay Area's region is currently in the 15% ICU capacity stay-at-home order or near that. We're on the cusp of that, it appears. And of course, we and some other counties voluntarily have been in that posture for about a week. If we do enter the regional stay-at-home order, and again, it looks like it could be a matter of days, what is the timeline then for lifting the stay-at-home order under the state's standards? Is it, is it three weeks minimum? I think I've heard, or some other?
Yeah, so we would, yeah, we would go into that order for three weeks. And it, 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 it looks at, it forecasts what your ICU capacity would be in the future. So it's, you know, a lot of this is trending. Right now, it's trending in the wrong direction. So we're having less and less capacity. Once that turns around, the trend will start coming back up. And as I said, you can anticipate the trends based on case rates. So when you start seeing lower case rates, you can anticipate that your ICU capacity, your hospital capacity might start relaxing. And that's, if that forecast looks like three weeks out, that you're going to be less than 15%, that's when the governor has signaled that that's why that order would be lifted.
Is it a minimum of three weeks? I'm just trying to give folks a sense of, because now we're running through on the voluntary basis through January 4th.
January 4th, yeah.
Let's say, let's say tomorrow or Thursday, we go into the automatic. Can folks then expect a minimum three-week stay-at-home order?
Yes.
Okay. And then finally, thank you for your update on vaccinations. That is indeed positive news on balance. You talked a little bit about phase three with a broader vaccination to the general population. There looks like it could be March through June. How, how sure are you of that? That seems somewhat optimistic. I mean, we often hear about, you know, perhaps the summer, late spring. Truly, the, the suggestion of March through June potentially would be encouraging. But how realistic do you think that is? What are you basing that on?
I mean, it's hard to know. I'm looking at CDC. The CDC announced that they thought March would be when the general population would potentially be starting to get the vaccine. Dr. Fauci also echoed that, I think, yesterday. You know, the, there's a Moderna product that just had a contract for 100 million more doses from Moderna. So that's, you know, I'm, I'm just citing what I'm, what I'm hearing from our, our national leadership in terms of the, you know, global acquisition of these, of these products. The others, you know, the other factor is that Operation Warp Speed, which was the, the sort of the, the project under which we were able to fast forward some of the, the trials and break through some of the, you know, frankly, some of the, I think, bureaucracy that was involved in sometimes slowing things down. Because the science has been really good. These trials have been excellent trials. They've been, they've been shortened because they have other elements of the system have, have been made more efficient. And there's other products. It's not just, there's, there's at least six now that seem, with the two that have already been approved that are entering into potentially, you know, those phase three, where we might actually see other products coming on the market as early as January.
Thanks.
Thank you, Damon. Any other questions? Yes, Judy. Judy, unmute, please.
Thank you, Dr. Fauci. You're the Dr. Fauci of Marin. You know, Damon and I both are in meetings with, with businesses and with nonprofits. And it's, it's interesting and it's heartbreaking to see their moods because they're, we're going backwards right now. And they're, we're, they're, after spending thousands of dollars to make their businesses ready to have outside dining, now they, the thousands of dollars they spent, now they're back in. I was, I was really excited last night when you talked about how excited you are with looking at the, at the vials. And I would just hope that on the website and things that we could share to people, that we use that as a, there is a hope that is, is we feel is going to come to pass. And I think that's about the only thing that's going to really make people feel like, okay, we have the vials and now let's start. So, you know, I love what you had in your, in your deep TV thing today. And I, I would encourage you on the website, anything you could do to, to say, this is what we're doing. I also think certainly you're going to be helped by the new administration. And we, you'll be able to talk very sensibly, whereas before you weren't. So, you know, I just, I want you to know that Marin is really, the Marin businesses are, are trying very hard. And just keep them in mind as you talk because they're mostly, these are our, our people we know. These are not huge conglomerates, although I'm so glad that we have BioMarin here. So that, I just wanted you to get that message and hear it. And the people that are listening can know that, you know, we haven't forgotten you and we're working hard and there is hope down the road. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Arnold.
Supervisor Redoni?
Dr. Willis, thank you so much. Really exciting to hear about the vaccine. But I do think that, including us and the general public, need to be patient because it is going to take a few months, three to six months to even get into the general population. Just wondered if you would just talk a little bit about that of the encouragement of people to get the vaccine, first of all? And also the follow-up vaccine and the importance of that? And, and how many does it take in Marin to get us to a point that we'd be more comfortable with protection out there?
Yes, a great question. I mean, Marin is a, or had been a famously vaccine hesitant community. We had some of the lowest childhood vaccination rates when I became health officer in 2013, which was always a mystery to me because I had been working in Haiti, you know, before that, where people were dying of vaccine-preventable diseases because the vaccines weren't available. And then moving to literally the opposite end of the spectrum, one of the most affluent communities, at risk for the same thing, but for a very different reason. And we've done a lot of work to try and help people understand safety and efficacy of vaccines. And I think we would take the same approach with this vaccine as we took with our, our childhood vaccination. We, we increased from 78% to 95% childhood vaccination rates in Marin County over the past six years. And it was really based on, you know, I'd like to think it was based on usually respectful conversations to really understand people's concerns and fears. Anyone who's, who's hesitant about vaccine is doing it for a reason. And the answer is, I think, just to offer the best available science and have it, have, have that occur in, in a conversation that is in a trusted environment with someone who knows that person. So our, we think our medical providers, our, our primary care doctors, pediatricians are really the best voices for helping people understand and navigate their choices around vaccine. This vaccine will not be mandatory. This is going to be voluntary. And I believe in its safety and efficacy. I plan to get vaccinated myself. Most of our doctors feel the same way. We, we did a poll of, we had a, we had a grand rounds on Friday, 300 providers. At the end of that, we polled our physicians, nurses, medical staff. 84% answered the definitely yes to the question, would you receive this vaccine? And, and it's based on, now that we've seen the actual data, not just what the manufacturers gave us, but what the science is saying and published in New England Journal about side effect profiles, et cetera. That's really the kind of information that our doctors and, and others look to. And we're much more confident. So I, my, my, my hope is that to that point of how is the, you know, by the time it reaches our community, what information will be available to us? And we're going to have a couple of months under our belts where our frontline medical workers, our first responders and others will have received the vaccine. I think seeing that people are doing okay and they're protected by that, I think will be a powerful sign that will help encourage others who may be on the fence to choose to be vaccinated. We need 70% at least, right? Across the county to really be, to be protected. And what happens at that point is that the virus is unable to find a new host, right? It will, the virus wants to jump from one person to another. That's how it survives. That's, that's what it's made to do. And if you, if you can protect one person after another, suddenly that virus, you might be infected. But if you don't encounter anyone else who's a potential susceptible host, right? That virus can't move, that chain of transmission dies right then. So it's a series of dead ends for the virus once you have 70% vaccinated. And it dies out. It literally will, will, can be eradicated from the county. And how different our world would be in Marin if that's where we were. And it's, it's, it's within our reach. I mean, you know, I, I'm looking at a summertime where if we have enough, high enough vaccination rates, we could be having a very different experience. But it doesn't mean we're going to have to, you know, I don't want to, I also want to set expectations to your point. I don't, it doesn't mean we're not going to be, we have to continue to cover our faces. We'll physical distancing, all that. It's going to be a major part of our lives through, through 2021.
Supervisor Sears?
Answered your question.
Supervisor Sears, anything?
No, nothing for me. I appreciate that, that last response in particular, Dr. Willis. We do need to all hang in there through 2021, for sure.
All right. Response and would appreciate.
Yeah. So starting at this top with Elias, why, why we apply for a variance to open faster? You know, we've been observing the trends all the way along. And we, you know, basically advocated the state to open more quickly when, when we felt like it was safe to do so for the sake of, I think, other, other themes of this conversation. You know, we recognize that at every step, we're trying to balance between two harms. This is a terrible year and there's no good decision, there's no good answers, right? So we're trying to balance harms and get through this. And so we know that we're hurting our economy when we shut down. But if we don't shut down, we have surges in cases and people die. Those are our options, unfortunately. And we're doing our best to navigate it every step. And thankfully, we're doing it together. And our business community has been really patient and very responsive, and we recognize that. And, you know, when I, when I saw that our trends were improving, the state hesitated to move us from that purple tier. And we spent a lot of time advocating and applying for a variance to be able to move forward more quickly because I was confident that we are heading in the right direction. When it comes to epidemics, it's, trends are so important. And when you have a downward trend, that's reliable. And I, I knew that. And so we actually were able to open into the red tier more quickly than the state had wanted us to through that advocacy. And we actually were able to continue to decline our case rates. We were in the red tier for, and then we went into the orange tier, we're in the orange tier. So it demonstrated, you know, validated that, that assessment, that we were ready at that time. Similarly, when I saw the trends going the other direction, it was like time to move now. Because once you get behind these, these trends, it takes a lot longer to build. So which is why we, we chose, before the state in that case, to take preemptive action to do this, this stay-at-home. Now other counties are joining that. Monterey County, Sonoma County also have joined, the six other Bay Area counties to voluntarily enter, enter that state. It's likely the state's going to place us where at 15.8% and beneath 15% we're going to get there. So I think, you know, the, the answer is that we are following the trends. Why, you know, financial support, the question around financial support for people and businesses? I think it's both. I don't know if there was a dichotomy suggested in that question, that we're either supporting the businesses or the people. We, I think, obviously, I think our efforts are towards, towards both. We have a robust rental assistance program, or not rental assistance, financial disaster, disaster relief payments for workers who are out of work. Because we recognize that when, when someone's been exposed or when they've been infected and unable to work, we've, I think, $1.5 million or so have been invested for individuals in order to stay out of work. And that's probably part of why we were able to successfully reduce transmission rates in our canal as part of our canal outbreak response plan, which is now being applied to other communities across the county. And finally, adjusted case rates versus unadjusted case rates. We look at both. It's true, the adjusted case rates is, is quite a generous, we get, you know, about, basically, our, our, our case rates get cut in half in the state's eyes in terms of the tier status because, because of high testing rates. We have some of the highest testing rates. But I do, and we, anywhere on the website, you'll see both. You'll see our adjusted case rates and our unadjusted case rates. Because the, the unadjusted case rates are the actual number of people who are being affected. And that's the, that's the critical factor. And that's, the data I shared with you today are unadjusted case rates. Regarding the SNF, the SNF skilled nursing facility question, it's all staff. It's not just, so when we're, when we go to the vaccinated, the SNFs, starting on Thursday, and then the rest of our 13 SNFs, it's every single person who's on the staff there. It's an important element of the, of an equity, equity approach to vaccinations at the facility level is recognizing that it's not just the clinical staff, but it's, it's also the support staff, the janitorial staff, the kitchen staff, et cetera, who are, who are exposed and, and, and will be vaccinated. And then the counting on canal, the question about, you know, communities of color and vaccine hesitancy and our approach to that scared us question. You know, the answer really, you mentioned the canal alliance and not relying on the canals. In fact, I feel is that we do need to rely on, on our community-based organizations for that. And that's probably our most effective and most important strategy is really to partner with faith-based organizations, with our community-based organizations, trusted, trusted leaders in every community who, who themselves understand the message and are able to, to offer that message in a way that is linguistically and culturally appropriate for, for their communities. And, and our job is to make sure that it's, it's accurate and true and that we stand behind the safety and efficacy. And then, and then lean into partnerships the way we always have. And, and our hope is that through that, we're able to offer every community the protection that they deserve that the vaccine can offer.
President Rice, quick follow-up on that. And Dr. Willis, thanks for pointing out our concern for essential workers. One other claim by one of the speakers is that we are currently not in compliance with the requirements of the purple tier. Could you perhaps touch on that as well?
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure what was meant by that. We are, I mean, we are in the purple, we are in the purple tier and we are applying purple tier restrictions. What's, what's really the dominant order right now for us in Marin is the stay-at-home order, which, which supersedes most of the purple tier contingencies. So there's only a few, there, there's nothing essentially that the state So there's only a few, there's nothing essentially that the stay-at-home order that the purple tier doesn't, the purple tier order doesn't also is not also contained in the stay-at-home order. So the purple tier status is is less meaningful for us as a designation, given that we have a much more restrictive policy of the stay-at-home order. One element of the purple tier that is specific is relates to schools. And and that's that middle schools and high schools that are not yet open, may not open now that we are in the purple tier. There's no waiver process. And that TK through grade six schools, because we're in the purple tier, that are that are not yet open but seek to open, would need to go through the public health officer for a waiver. That's really the main issue that the one policy area where the purple tier status is is important.
All right, Dr. Willis, thank you very much.